I don't know where it is, and then it's right behind me.
(laughing).
First two times that you did it, yeah.
Yeah.
You turned right there to him.
You're all habits.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening again. I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting this Tuesday, January 27th, the year 2015. If we can have the invocation from Pastor Lord, please.
Father, it's great we can come and approach you and thank you for these people that go beyond their own livelihoods and what they need to come serve this city. And so, Father, we petition you for that. We petition your wisdom, Lord God, concerning the things coming, Lord. Wisdom to come forth concerning the parking. Wisdom come forth with all the decisions that needs to be made. And, Father, we just pray for each and every one of them and their families, Lord, that they would just live in peace and health. And, Lord, tonight, we do particularly ask your comfort to Nancy Britton, Father. You said you're the God of mercy and all comfort, and you comforts through all of our trials. So, Father, we just invoke you to comfort her, the loss of her mother, and even be able to rejoice of her going, Lord God. And so, we just thank you for that. And, Lord, again, we just lift up our police officers, our firemen, our workers, Father. We just pray your hand and your protection upon this city, Lord. May your peace fill each home. May your joy, strength, and your love cover us. And, Father, even tonight, we just pray for your wisdom continue to flow into decisions to be made, Lord, in a unified effort, Father, that we love one another and dwell in unity in this great city you've given us, in Jesus' name.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you do the honors?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bill Colombo.
Here.
Councilwoman Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Councilwoman Nancy Britton.
Here.
Councilman Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Pablick.
Here.
And City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes of January 13th, 2015.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Announcements. Mr. O'Neill.
None at this time.
Mr. Pablick.
Actually, I do have something. As you all are aware, the legislature passed the new law requiring elected officials take four hours of --
I'm on.
It's on. That elected officials take four hours of ethics training a year. I've spoken with the city clerk, and she is checking to see if I would be permitted to offer that to you, under the idea of before council meetings, over the course of a couple months, we could have a half hour or an hour and read through this. It's my understanding that there are several cities whose city attorneys are offering this to their officials. I'm just waiting for some confirmation that there is nothing prohibiting me from doing so. I think that might be the best thing. The League of Cities is offering some of these classes, but they're not convenient for anybody. I figure this way, we can either do it immediately preceding or after a council meeting for a couple of short half-hour flights. Hopefully, I'll have some more information for you at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Comments from the public. Pastor Lord.
Leonard Lord, I pastorate 8114 Leo Kid Avenue. I apologize for not making the dim seven meeting. I know I was here to pray and wound up sick and some things in the holidays, but just ask your forgiveness for that. And I do just want to thank the city, the mayor. She connected me up with some gifts, and merit was a blessing. I was able to go to Ax Resource Center, also New Walk Church. We had a feeding program where we were able to give some out at the church and some others helping the community. So, thank you so much for that, okay? It was just really a blessing to be able to go load the truck up and distribute that out among the community. And also, Jocelyn did a great job out in the park, and good to have both the chiefs out. It was just such a beautiful time and just loving on the children. And it's just great to see the city put their efforts together. And we know, as we want to be whole and see go the best, the more we can unite to do things and let each of our gifts spill over in the community and bless them, the better it's going to be. So, just want to thank you all for that. And we will be getting our 40 days of prayer. We started this 1997. It's Seek God for the City. The prophet Jeremiah says in Jeremiah 29:7, says, "Seek God for the peace of the city." And in the peace of the city, you'll find your peace. So, I left a prayer guide for each one, and we will be meeting from Ash Wednesday to Palm Sunday and praying around the county in different areas. And all of these are biblical prayers. I mean, prayers about everything from, you know, a single mom to a homeless person living on the street. So, they're really, and a group will be doing that. So, any way we can help or during that time, you have any particular prayer needs, let us know. And just thank you again for just loving the people and looking for wisdom to move forward. So, thank you so much, and God bless you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Thomas Brown, 7436 Candlelight Court. On Wednesday, January 21st, I met with the city manager and the assistant city manager. We viewed some nondescript aerial photos of the Candlelight subdivision area. We viewed some blurry photos from 1941, the '50s, and the early '70s, which were made worse by viewing them on a computer screen. None of the photos clearly proved when the body of water that is now known as Lake Cox came into existence. I have an old blurry 37 by 33-inch aerial photo of the area that was provided to me by the Southwest Florida Water Management District. There is no Candlelight Court and no homes in that area in the photo. Ponds and lakes are a lighter shade of gray in the photo. I can make out what is now Lake Cox, long before any homes were built. We met to discuss when Lake Cox came into existence and whether it was naturally formed or dug. I have proof that Pasco County deeded this body of water to the city of Port Ritchie in 1979. I have the word of former Mayor Michael Cox that the body of water formed naturally prior to 1979. It is the opinion of the city manager that the lake was dug, but he offers no proof. Can anyone come up with a shred of evidence that the lake was dug? And one more thing. I am still waiting, it's been more than a year now, for an answer from the city attorney as to, is there a five-foot-wide perpetual public easement along the west shore of Lake Cox? I hope you get an answer before two years is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else? Walter.
Walter with Gildog and Bayou Business Association. Chris and I mentioned earlier about upcoming event. We held it last year, Pasco Paddle Palooza. It's going to be back for its second year. So, it's going to be on April 18th and 19th. 17th, 18th, and 19th. So, on the Friday night, it's going to be, a lot of the different businesses in the Bayou are going to be having entertainment that night. And then, on the 18th, is the Dragon Boat Race, which we held out in the Bayou, and it's going to be in the same spot this year. And then, on Sunday, where actually it's going to be a double race day, where we're going to have a race along the Cody River. It's going to start in Francis Ave, so we're going to try to tie our neighbors in in New Port Ritchie and invite them to be a part of it. And then, in the afternoon, we're going to do sprint races down the channel there. So, Chris and I mentioned that we're going to be helping to raise funds for various different projects that are in the waterfront to help out with those, along with a number of other charities in the local area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Anyone from council?
If I might, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight because I really believe that, you know, multiple minds are helpful to any solution. And I know it's hard to get here, but it's always nice to have you here, and thank you for being here. And my sincere sympathies to Nancy Britton and her family.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, I'm just looking to, does anybody know what Easter is?
April 7th.
April 5th is the Sunday.
Yep.
Well, you know, we had such a great response for Christmas. And in the past, Pipers, Little Pipers Group, we used to do, you know, different functions throughout the year for the children. I want to do an Easter egg hunt this year in the park. So, maybe we can get some people that want to donate some little prizes for the kids and if they get a certain color egg and figure out how we're going to do that, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm talking about an Easter egg hunt for the children in waterfront park. We've done that in the past. We had a group called Pipers for many, many years. And we've done Halloween, where we go out and give the children things. And we just kind of pushed that for the Christmas holiday season, and it turned out to be tremendous. And so, I want to keep it going. I want to get that small-town feel going again that we haven't seen in a while. So, let's, anybody that wants to, you know, donate some candy or some little toys or something for little door prizes, we'll come up with some idea, you know. Take some of those plastic eggs and hide them and put little, maybe prize slips inside for the prizes that we have and some of the children, and maybe we'll do two different age groups and, you know, come up with something. I know Ms. Gray will get involved.
Tom, how do you look in a bunny suit? I say, how do you look in the bunny suit?
You did a good job at Santa Claus, I got to tell you that.
I have never tried one. But I know the bottom of my job description says, "Any and all other tasks may be assigned by the city council."
All right. Anyone else on council? All right. Let's move on to the agenda, then. First, we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to council business, the first item is golf cart first reading of the ordinance. Mr. O'Neill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. This was discussed at our last meeting, and my direction was to put this on for first reading. I won't go through the list I did last time of all of the pertinent points of the ordinance. It is in the packet. I did, however, make some changes based on the comments that I heard at the last meeting. I changed the maximum speed limit that a golf cart could be operated on, a maximum speed limit for any road, to 30 miles an hour. And also, I took Grand Boulevard off of the list of prohibited streets. I've had some conversations with representatives from New Port Ritchie who are interested in following suit with this. And they specifically talked about Grand Boulevard and the possibility of residents being able to go back and forth on golf carts. So, I took that off. Any other changes that you may desire could be incorporated into the ordinance and brought back to you for second reading on February 10th. So, it is first reading. It is a public hearing, and public comment would be appropriate at this time.
Mr. Pablick, would you read the ordinance by caption, please?
Certainly, Mayor. Ordinance number 15-643, An Ordinance of the City of Port Ritchie, Florida, amending Chapter 38 of the Port Ritchie Code, creating new Article 5, authorizing the operation of golf carts on certain public roads in the city of Port Ritchie, with the exception of specified roads. Regulating the operation of golf carts on public roads, requiring the posting of appropriate signs, providing penalties for violations, providing for separability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion from council before I open it up to the public?
Just a quick question that I came across. Once this registration is done by the parties that want the golf carts, how will the police know if those carts have been certified unless they stop them? Is there a sticker or something we can put on those, have them put on those carts?
That's what was anticipated. We would bring back a resolution for your consideration, setting forth the fee and the requirement for reflective markings on the golf cart.
Yes, under Section 38-123, it does provide for a sticker made of reflective material, et cetera, in a color and style selected by the city council to be affixed to the golf cart.
I like your voting safety sticker, right?
We get to pick the color.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, we addressed, I'll just say, we had some questions before in regards to this. So, we addressed, obviously, the speed issue. We obviously addressed the registration process, you know, requiring the sign of a release holding the city harmless for any claims related injuries, et cetera. And we noted that there'd be a few additions, such as the sticker and I believe a, I don't know if it's kind of a safety addition on the actual cart. So, as Tom indicated, these would come as well. So, that's all I have.
All right. One of the things I think we ought to think about in moving forward on this, obviously, safety is a big concern, and there are certainly some of the side streets in the city where there isn't a lot of heavy or fast traffic. But the two problem streets that I see, and we may need to talk about how to enhance the safety, would be Bay Boulevard and Old Post. Washington Street is still excluded in the ordinance. But other than Washington Street, I see Bay and Old Post as being full of traffic and some, even though the speed limit is, what, 30 miles an hour, people don't go 30 miles an hour, and it's a lot of traffic. So, I think those are two concern areas, and obviously, one of the purposes of this ordinance is to facilitate alternate uses of transportation on our city streets and access to the park and waterfront district and all of that. But, you know, we've got to weigh that against not only safety, but other congestion that may be created. So, I just throw that out as a concern.
Quick question with Washington Street. You know, we have a new development there, the 78 or 80 homes or whatever that are going to go in there. Now, if I recall correctly on this golf cart, they can cross over the street. So, like, for instance, if those people and those residences want to get to Grand Boulevard, they can take their golf cart and cross over Washington and come down to Grand.
That's correct. You can, under the terms of the ordinance, you will be able to cross Washington Street at a right angle.
Okay.
Well, this was a purpose, too, regarding the lights and, you know, when you talk about safety issues, especially at these two locations, you know, that's important, I think, as well as one of the residents pointed, you know, when you see the city vehicles going out like a tractor or something that has that large thing in the back, whether or not that's something that would be incorporated on the cart as well. But obviously, the lights, signals, et cetera, you know, we think of a golf cart, we think of it on a golf course, but, you know, this is a little bit different. These are, you know, safety-equipped, road-ready golf carts.
Are they?
Hang on, hang on.
Yeah, that was a question I was going to ask. Do they have lights, you know, where you could, like, if I'm driving a vehicle down the road, that I could see that golf cart?
They're required to, under the ordinance.
So, they have to have, like, the type of lights that I would drive in my, with my car?
Yes, and reflective tape.
And brake lights and all?
Right.
Yes, reflective tape.
Yes.
All right. Anything else from council?
No.
All right. I'm going to open it up to the public. Ms. Spalding. Okay. Mr. Janssle.
I don't know why. Chet Jassik, 5134 Miller Bayou. I'm all for golf carts. I golf, and I like golf carts, and I think they're great transportation. So, I'm not against the ordinance at all, although I think it's not written very, I don't want to say clearly, there's some places they contradict each other. Like, I'm for it as long as they're street legal, okay? They have insurance. I don't want somebody running into me or my property, and I'm stuck with a bill. And I don't want them to impede traffic, especially on Old Post. And if there's a golf cart going 10 miles an hour and I'm going someplace, I want to do my 30 miles an hour on that street what it is. So, are we able to pass a golf cart on that street? Because golf carts typically are not going to be going very fast. So, I don't want to impede traffic, and that actually says in here, it doesn't impede traffic, but I don't know about passing them. And I think you already did the speed limit, that it's, they could be 30 miles an hour, so that's good. Speed limits on the road. And I don't want the speed limits reduced on our streets just to accommodate golf carts. I don't want to go down to 20 miles an hour because a golf cart only can go 20. So, I am for golf carts. These are my concerns, though. And in the ordinance, though, in the ordinance, it says, sounds like during the day, hours of sunset to sunrise, I'm sorry, hours of sunset to sunrise, except otherwise provided, they need to have effective brakes, reliable steering, safe tires, rearview mirror, red reflective warning. Doesn't say anything about lights, turn signals, anything else. It just says all you need is reflective reflection on it. It says, operating to golf carts the hours between sunset and 12:00 midnight. Then they need headlights, brake lights, taillights, turn signals, and a windshield. So, one, it sounds like you can have two different types of golf carts, one you can ride during the day, one at night. But then, if you go back to 38-121, it's number three, it says, golf carts must be equipped. So, this is saying all golf carts must be equipped with headlights, brake lights, turn signals, and everything. So, this one page says, you got to have them. This other one page says, you don't need them if you're driving during the day. So, I have a very question about that. I mean, I think they need to be lights on them. I don't care if it's day or night because you're going to get stuck out there past sunset. So, I think you need to have carts that are, actually have turn signals, brake lights, headlights. Reflective is not going to work, you know, after sunset. And people will get stuck out, you're going to get stuck out after hours. So, anyways, they're my two, they're my main concerns I'm talking about here. And I did, was when I'm reading this also, it said that the city did a safety, let's see, the city of Port Ritchie studied the safety of golf cart operations as, you know, certain use of the code roads. And you have, I'd like to see what that, you know, your study explains there. It says, it's, you know, do you have a study that you actually did that proposes and says, this is how we ended up with the study and why we say it's safe and it's good to have in our city? It says you did a study here, so I don't know where that study is and if you can see it. And it also says that that's in the best interest of the city to have golf carts. I mean, I can see it's nice to have transportation. I like golf, I'd like to buy one and have one, but I want to know, is why is it in the best interest of the city? I know it's going to be in the best interest of myself if we have a golf cart and other people have them, but why everybody else, I'm not sure. But anyways, I think the thing you need to check out is why there's contradiction between the daytime, the nighttime, and then over on this side, it says you need to have them all, carts have lights and turn signals.
Thank you.
Good move, though, I think.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sandy?
He had the ordinance in front of him. Sandy Spalding, 8207 Old Post Road. All golf carts should be street-ready because even if they ride during the day and it rains, it's dark. Every golf cart that's out on the road should be street-ready. Number one. Number two, right now, the golf carts that we have do ride down the bike and hike trail on Old Post Road. You do know that. Is everybody aware of that? Would that be a good idea for the golf carts on Old Post Road to go on the bike and hike trail so as not to create a problem? I don't know. It's just food for thought. But they ride there now, so they do fit. But, you know, with traffic coming and going on Old Post Road, are we able to pass the golf cart? Would that be against the law? I don't know. It's very tacky, but questionable because of the traffic. You know, when people are going and coming to work, you know what Old Post Road is like, I'm sure.
Any street that has the double lines, there is no passing allowed. But with this, we would hope that the golf carts would give way, pull to the side, and then let them pass without crossing the double. And then, with the path trail, if we were to move forward with allowing that, we just would probably have to add that they would need horns so they can make noise when they're coming up on other vehicles, bicycles, or people.
Well, isn't street-ready meaning they have to have a horn, too?
Well, the street-ready statute is meaning that anybody currently can spend about $250 and do everything that we talked about, the lights and all that.
Yeah.
And have it registered, get a tag on it, and drive it on the road currently. The way the city's doing it is that at a much lesser fee and a lesser requirement for the daytime hours, and that's where the difference comes in.
But they all should have a horn. I mean, really, if you've got a little kid trying to cross the street or, you know, they should all have a horn to it of some sort. And to me, they should all be street-ready, not just for the daytime. What if they go out during the day and they're coming back at night, where, you know, in the winter, evening comes a little sooner than it does in the summer? If every golf cart is street-ready for day or night, we don't have to worry about that. We won't have more problems. And think about them using the bike and hike trail on Old Post Road. It's a thought, and maybe you should take that into consideration because how many of you are on Old Post Road during commuting time? Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Lane Lee, 5713 Berlin. My concerns are still the same as the last meeting about insurance and child restraints. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close it to the public? Okay.
Just what he said. Is there anything insurance? I don't know about, there's nothing said about insurance. Will they have to have insurance? How is that covered? And the other thing, the other, one other thing, Tom, is will people have to drive the golf carts to the city hall to get a sticker, or you go inspect them at their houses? How are you going to, it says you're going to inspect these golf carts. So, how is that going to happen?
That's yet to be worked out. I'm assuming that they will not have to bring them here because they've got obvious impediments to doing so, like US 19 at Ridge Road. So, we'll work that out and with the registration process, and that'll come back to council by resolution.
But you will actually see the golf cart.
Yes.
Because I know a few people in our neighborhood have moved out, but they had some really rickety, they had golf carts riding around in the streets, which I know the police had given them tickets and told them not to do it, and they've since moved. But I hope we're not going to have pieces of junk riding around our streets. So, I hope you do look at them and you do some kind of an inspection.
Thank you. All right. Back to council. Any additional comments?
Mayor, I join you in your concerns on Bay Boulevard. However, if we were to close Bay Boulevard to the traffic of these, it kind of defeats the purpose. Old Post, I think I could go along with them operating on the hike and bike trail. That would make it a lot safer. It's wide enough. I think even bikes could get by as they went by, so I don't have a problem with that. But Bay Boulevard, I live there, and I know. But Bay Boulevard, I live there and I know, they don't even stop at the stop sign on Old Post, so it's a problem. We've had officers out there for years trying to stop this from being a drag strip, but, uh, people tend to roll through there at a very high rate of speed. And unfortunately, sitting in this chair, I have to look out for, and we all have to look out for the safety of the citizens. So it is a problem. Um, I don't, I think if they were all street legal, I'd feel a little better about it, uh, if they all had lights and, and all the equipment on it that they needed for, uh, street, to be totally street legal. Um, I think that would make me more comfortable there. What's your thoughts on that? I just wondered, council.
Well, uh, you know, look, we're certainly not the first, uh, in this area. Um, we know this is all over the place, especially in the state of Florida. Um, it seems like it would, you know, we, we could resolve what we're discussing. When we talk about insurance, that's a good question. Um, you know, does this channel over if somebody obviously owns an automobile? Does that channel over when they're driving a golf cart? Um, you know, especially when we, uh, note that, uh, all golf carts are subject to existing statutory traffic regulations. Um, I was under the assumption, as far as talking about the daytime, nighttime, that these golf carts are equipped with, you know, uh, all-inclusive package of lights, et cetera, um, you know, not just reflectors during the day. Um, you know, I mean, look, a car's lights are not on during the day generally, maybe some of the new cars are. But, um, you know, obviously, my impression was, you know, the, the lights would be notable, uh, on this particular golf cart. So, you know, again, we're not the first, um, you know, there, there, we, we have, you know, other research to do, uh, and we should be able to resolve.
All right.
Just for clarification, the intent of the ordinance was to make sure that every golf cart had headlights, uh, taillights, uh, and turn signals, uh, and all of that appropriate safety equipment. That's set forth, if there's any contradictions, we'll clarify those before second reading.
Okay, then, um, are they standardly equipped with a horn? Do you know? Anybody know?
No.
Can we add that in there? I mean, they can use any ki, even a bike horn, it doesn't matter, you know? So I think it would be important to have, you know, some warning device and put it as a part of the standard requirements under thirty-eight dash one-twenty-one-three.
Okay, we can do that. The state statute requires, or has minimum for driving during the day or at night, but the statute does allow the municipalities to make it more restrictive. So we can require the same stuff to operate at night to be operated during the day. So we can go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
And we can add additional safety devices such as a horn.
Yeah, I think that one size fits all, uh, just makes it less complicated.
Yeah. So then, um, what you would do is, um, eliminate, um, what, B or C on, uh, the prior page?
We'd probably merge, merge B and C together.
Okay.
And get rid of the language, eliminate it to the sunrise and sunset.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then it may be redundant to, to the paragraph three.
That is correct.
Uh, so you may wanna just clean that up a little.
We'll go ahead and clean it up now that I've got the direction that they're gonna have, regardless whether you're operating night or day, you shall have the same equipment.
Okay.
And we'll go ahead and add some language regarding some sort of horn, uh, that'll be required.
Okay. Um, is, is there statutory requirement for insurance?
It's the same thing as operating, uh, any other motor vehicle on the road, they're gonna have to maintain insurance. It doesn't need to be included within the ordinance.
Okay.
And then, just real quick to answer, uh, Mr. Lee's question, uh, what about child restraint? Would, would it be the same, uh, child restraint if you, uh, are operating a golf cart and you have a child, do they have to be belted in?
It's something we need to consider and put in there, but I don't believe that currently has that. And speaking of insurance, um, just so people understand, like, a motorcycle, if you're twenty-five years or older, you're not required in the state of Florida to have insurance to ride a motorcycle on the road. So the insurance, there are some, um, statutory, um, breaks for stuff like that.
Okay. Well, what's the desire of council? Uh, Joe, can you find the statutory provision on, uh, golf carts in the state statute? Does it require insurance on?
I'm, I'm trying to pour through that right now, but I can double-check on that.
Okay. Uh, and the, um, the other thing, is there a problem with, um, the golf carts on the hike and bike trail? Is there any prohibition?
As long as, normally, as long as they're eight feet to nine feet wide, which allows for safe passing, um, then you can have a, uh, go-kart join in with bicycles.
Mm-hmm.
And, and sidewalks too, a sidewalk is that wide.
Okay. Um, and that may be something we, that would be important on, especially on, uh, Old Post, uh, we don't have a similar, um, trail or, or alternative on Bay Boulevard. But Bay, those, those are gonna be problem areas, um, they're gonna either be dangerous for the golf cart or, um, you know, slow down traffic, uh, and, which may not necessarily be a bad thing on, uh, Bay Boulevard, uh, since there is a speed limit on that roadway.
Hopefully, they don't make speed bumps out of them.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, I, with that input, Joe, do we need, um, to go back to a, a first reading again with the revisions that we're talking about, as well as, um, some clarification on safety seats and insurance?
I think with the, the, the differences with the insurance and the, the safety restraints, that, that would be more of a substantive change, other than the, the minor things that we talked about.
Okay.
So it would be brought back for a first reading.
Okay. All right. All right, and is the desire of council to have those things in there?
Yeah.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and make those modifications and bring it back for your consideration.
Okay. All right, moving on, uh, the next item is, um, copy machine lease. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, uh, you'll see, uh, in your packet, uh, the renewal lease for three copy machines located at City Hall and at the Police Department. Uh, they're heavily used, the, uh, total base charge for the three new copiers is five-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and two cents per month, plus a copy co, uh, charge, uh, and these prices are part of a Florida state contract. Uh, it is the staff recommendation to approve the proposed lease.
All right, um, discussion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Discussion.
Um, I, you know, as noted here, um, the total cost is actually gonna be, uh, lower than what we're paying right now, isn't that, that correct?
Yeah.
So we're basically replacing our machines, continuing a lease, and overall, out-of-pocket is.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, kinda hard to argue with something like that.
All right, um, any further discussion? Anybody from the public wishing to address the copy, uh, machine lease issue? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to, uh, purchase of new utility vehicles. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes, you'll see, the next item is, uh, an item for purchase of two new utility vehicles. Uh, they would replace existing vehicles and, uh, just for your information, we park those vehicles out front. Uh, the vehicles that are being replaced are, um, two F, F-two-fifty regular cab trucks, uh, one has one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand miles on it, it's an '04, and it doesn't run at this time, and the other truck has two-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand miles, uh, and, plus, and, uh, is not serviceable at this point. Uh, in order to keep these trucks, uh, we'd be spending more money, uh, than we need to on vehicles. Um, and the total cost, uh, under the Florida Sheriff's Association contract is fifty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, and, uh, we're recommending approval of that. It is budgeted in the current fiscal year budget.
Question, uh, why are, why are we going to two-fifties? We've got, uh, uh, one of the vehicles we're replacing is a F-one-fifty and, um, Chevy Silverado. I don't know how they're comparable to the two-fifties, but why do we need the two-fifties?
They hold up better. Uh, they, these are work trucks, uh, they will haul heavy loads from time to time, and the suspension and drivetrain are built, uh, uh, much more sturdier than, than the F-one-fifty, and, uh, i- it is a good idea from the staff's perspective to replace it with a two-fifty. Uh, the only one-fifties that are in duty, uh, that don't haul a heavy load, uh, are the trucks that are driven by the supervisors. All of the rest of the work trucks, we're, uh, wanting two-fifties for.
Okay. Question. If, if, um, we have trucks driven by supervisors, are the, are those trucks typically used to haul things?
Not very much, uh, occasionally, but not too often.
Could we not contemplate using other vehicles for supervisors to get around in, other than a big truck? For gas economy, for, for whatever, just a thought, to try to, um, economize, economize where we can?
Well, I, I would tell you that in that line of work, uh, i- it's good that they all have trucks because their duties can change from time to time, their duties can change, uh, in the day, any day or any night, uh, on an emergency basis, and, uh, it wouldn't be unusual to have an emergency situation, a water break, or a sewer main package, or lift station failure, where the supervisor or the department manager, Pat, uh, would need to go back to the shop and load a pump on, or load lighting for, uh, nighttime duty and, and other specialty tools. So, a pickup truck is a, is the way to go, I would recommend.
Hey, anyone else?
Um, how long have those two trucks been down?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How long have those two trucks been down? Uh, maybe you could answer that, Pat?
I believe, uh, the first one listed on here has been down a few months, and the second one just recently went down.
Okay. And what fund are we paying for this out of? Penny, Penny for Pasco?
Only question I have is, uh, with the, um, upgrade, basically, um, I own an F-one-fifty, so, but I certainly don't use it for heavy duty, uh, but, um, would you expect, uh, with this kind of an upgrade? When we look at the mileage, and we've looked at this before, and there's always been, you know, some comments, uh, one of them with one-eighteen, the other one with two-sixty-six, you just think, with, with the right maintenance, with the right combinations, uh, if it's an average workload type of truck, that we might expect, you know, that these would last? I don't know what you could project.
Well, typically, in fleet maintenance, my experience has been that you really ought to look at replacing your truck if it's older than ten years, or it has more than one-hundred-thousand miles. So the city's certainly got its money's worth on the trucks that are out in the parking lot, uh, and I would use that as a general rule of thumb.
That's a quick question. How, how many miles do we typically put on our vehicles in our small city within a year? Do you, do you have any idea?
I'd like to be able to say that that varies considerably from truck to truck, and it does actually, um, such as like the Vector truck, real low mileage. A one-fifty that's running back and forth from job to job on a daily basis, we can do twenty thousand miles really easily. Um, and there's all kind of variations between.
I'm just kinda curious, that's all I.
Well, just as a follow-up comment on that, uh, these trucks operate outside the city, uh, in the city's utility service area.
Right.
Which is about twice the size of the city. It goes all the way up US-19 to about where Stop and Play is.
Yeah, well, I've realized that you can, you know, add, add miles up quickly, you know, 'cause I'm in my car constantly too, I was just kinda curious, is how many miles, uh, typically we would get? So, so twenty thousand, so you're getting at, at least five good years, um, of service out of the truck, if not more.
Well, you can look at these trucks, uh, and the mileage you got. You've got one that's, uh, ten years old and, and averaged about eleven, twelve thousand, and the other one that's about fourteen years old, that, uh, is, um, uh, twenty thousand.
And typically, don't the, uh, the, the more heavy-duty trucks really kinda go more miles? You don't necessarily have to turn in a two-fifty at a hundred thousand, do you, Tom? I mean...
Just depends on the condition. Uh, you know, we look at these pretty closely. I looked at them myself and, uh, looked at all of the equipment on the truck, and the condition of the bed, the condition of the chassis, uh, and, and the interior, and, um, these trucks are, are in extremely poor condition. And, uh, but in, in regard to mileage and length of service, the, the duty's rough in the utility department. Um, you know, it's, they can be, you know, in, in the middle of mud, uh, muck, rain, uh, all kinds of severe duty installations and, and situations, so, um, it depends, you know, but I would expect a good ten years out of each one of these trucks, maybe more.
How many vehicles we have in the utility department, all in all?
I'd have to get you that information, I don't have it in front of me. I'd be glad to do that.
Pat, do you have an estimate?
It's either four or five right now.
All right, um, we need a motion to approve. We have a motion, yeah? Have a motion to approve that? Motion to approve.
Second.
Is it a second? All right. Um, anyone from the public wishing to address this issue? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back. Is there any further discussion on this issue? We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of these two thousand fifteen Ford F-two-fifty, uh, trucks for the, uh, utility department. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Is there any other comments, um, that council wants to make before we adjourn? Okay?
Do we have, uh, another workshop date set? Um, I don't know if we, uh...
What?
With the, you know, our discussion tonight, obviously, coming back in regards to parking some of what we've gone over.
I think we need to do some, some homework, uh, before we set a, a new one, but...
Okay.
We need to set a, a new one and, and, uh, fine-tune what the options are and see if we can move forward.
Just wanna keep this going.
Yeah, okay, good idea. Anything else? All right, we'll stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.